Yeah, I didn't see any problems with that.
Call the meeting in order, please. Don't see the pastor here. He may have still been on the 7:15 schedule.
Okay.
Um.
Mr. Hess is new.
I think that's cruel. Mr. Supervisor Fisher, would you lead us in an invocation?
Yes, let us pray. Dear Lord and heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for our many blessings. We ask for your comfort and be with all the men and women of our armed forces serving to protect our freedoms, serving throughout the world, and especially those that are in harm's way. We ask for your guidance and our deliberations in work for the citizens of Frederick County this evening. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Place Chairman Ewing, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Please stand face flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of the agenda, Mr. Riley?
I have no changes, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor De Haven, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton, any discussion? Hearing now, all's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, the agenda is adopted. Consent agenda, Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd offer the following tabs. Tabs D, which is the Parks and Recreation Commission report. Tab F, which is the Transportation Committee report. And then, under a separate consent agenda, I would offer Tab G, subdivision waiver request.
For clarity there, Mr. Riley has separated those because I will not be voting on Consent Agenda Item G. Supervisor Ewing, I'll ask you to take over, but I plan to participate in D and F. So is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items D and F?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Supervisor Collins, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher, any discussion? Hearing now, all's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Items D and G on a consent agenda, Supervisor Ewing.
You want to... Do we have a motion to include Item G under Consent Agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? Chair votes aye.
Thanks, sir. Citizen comments, Mr. Riley, did anyone sign up?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have three people that have signed up. The first speaker is Tim Donovan with reference to the text amendment. I believe he lives in Opeckin District.
Yes, if you please come up, repeat your name, give your magisterial district, limit your comments to three minutes, please.
May it take me three minutes to get there.
We'll give you credit.
Thank you very much. I'm Tim Donovan and I live in Lake Frederick, Shenandoah. And I urge you to please move forward with the zoning text amendment for private roads in a non-age-restricted community. This is very important, that this be approved and move forward so that this great development that we live in can continue to grow. And this is a win-win. It's a win for our current residents, and it's a win for the taxpayers of Frederick County. Thank you very much. By the way, Mr. Chairman, you'll be provided with a petition signed by over 220 of our residents urging support on this. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Riley?
Next is Mr. Ty Lawson to speak to the text amendment.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors, I'm Ty Lawson here on the same agenda item, the text amendment, to allow a request for a waiver to allow private streets for non-age-restricted lots in an R5. And specifically, I'm here on behalf of Lansdowne Development Group, which has a contract to buy the Shenandoah Development, which of course surrounds Lake Frederick. The community is currently approved for private streets, it's master planned, many of the lots have been built out for age-restricted lots. Lansdowne wants to continue that. They also want to be able to add non-age-restricted lots to this community and, as you just heard from Mr. Donovan, help it to grow. We spent a lot of time on this. We've met with our neighbors. As Tim just pointed out, we're just delighted to get 221 residents to sign a petition in favor of this text amendment and the approval of the waiver. That's over 75% of the residents, and I was advised, we're getting the rest of the signatures, but these active adults are exactly that. They're out on zip lines and things like that, and when they return from holiday, they too will sign this. You'll hear in the text amendment, there already is in the ordinance some tough standards for private roads. In the text amendment, they're even tougher, and that's frankly, in part, due to us. We want those tough standards, we want to build a depth of pavement that allows for private streets that do not need maintenance and will live on well into the future. Lansdowne wants to continue construction of a gated community for age-restricted and non-age-restricted lots. Gated private streets makes for a more exclusive and a higher price point properties. That's what Lansdowne does, and that's what they want to do here in Frederick County. As Mr. Donovan said, it's good for the existing residents and it's also good for the county. And then, one other thing we're asking for is so that the text amendment is not considered in the abstract, that if it could be advertised and heard at the same time as our requested waiver, we won't get distracted and talk about other potential R5 properties. Frankly, I don't think there are any. But, to be clear, we're asking for a waiver to allow for this build-out, and in order to do that, the legislation needs to be in place to enable it, to allow us to make that request to you. So we think it would make sense to hear them both at the same time. Why are we asking for this? Again, it's for the build-out in the Lake Frederick community. We'll be happy to respond to any questions when this comes up, but of course, it's not a public hearing, so that's why we're talking now. And as Mr. Donovan said, I've got the petitions and I'll deliver them to Mr. Tibbs. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Riley?
Final speaker is Hobie Mitchell, reference text amendment.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Hobie Mitchell. I'm a real estate developer in the Virginia area for doing master plan communities for over 20 years. I was also a member of the Conwell Transportation Board for seven years under several governors, so I'm very familiar with road standards and designs and maintenance. We're very excited about the potential to develop the rest of this community in a standard that's already there. It's... One reason why we like this community is just because of the standards and the level of the community involvement in it. Our plan is also to get the community active right away into the operations, because they've been only involved as a voluntary advisory group. That's what we do. The standards, we absolutely have no problems with, because we're concerned about the construction activity and what kind of things could deteriorate during the roads before we even turn it over. We're also concerned about design speeds through the community, because as you probably know, having built a lot of VDOT standard roads, what happens is citizens, the slow people down, come back to you as a board and ask for variances for safety standards, more stop signs, speed bumps. What we want to do is incorporate that right into the designs of the community upfront, and we can do that with private streets, with standards that are acceptable to the county, and frankly, acceptable to VDOT. In fact, we recently wrote a letter in, just to clarify things on public streets. Actually called the district administrator, who I know, new district administrator in Stanton District, I got to make sure I say that right. Libby Welch always used to correct me. Just to make sure that we have some safe speed roads that are with lower maintenance. I ask you to consider the text amendment, send it forward, and I would ask that you do our waiver at the same time, because I think it's important to look at them both at the same time, so you know exactly what you're getting. And if you have a chance, please visit our communities, talk to our HOAs. We budget things, we put capital reserves aside, so things are not coming back to the county all the time, to try to... For their responsibility for payment of it. We want it as a gated community. We've committed to the homeowners to finish a lot of things that were incomplete, to get them started. Some rec centers, fixing some of the roads that have been in disrepair for a couple of years. We've already started with contractors to inspect it, to get them back in order, replace bonds, two of which were, I think, already have expired. So we're willing and able to get them established, get rec centers, finish the big rec center facility. And we actually have two builders signed up. One, a national active adult builder of very high quality. We're very excited about it. And we've also committed to a floor to make sure that the community knows that they have a minimum amount of active adult, and we can always expand beyond that. But we're excited about the prospect, and we hope that you will consider this and move it forward. Thanks.
Anyone else, Mr. Riley?
Sir.
Are there any Board of Supervisors' comments? Hearing now, we'll move on to the minutes. Budget work session, February 13, 2013. Move for approval, Mr. Chairman. A motion by Supervisor Fisher to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins, any discussion? Supervisor... Our new supervisor will be abstaining?
Yes.
All's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Move on to the regular meeting... Meeting... Excuse me. Regular meeting minutes of February 13, 2013.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Supervisor Ewing to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton, any discussion? Again, we have... All's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Minutes of the meeting of February 13, 2013 are approved. Next, committee assignments. Extension Leadership Council, Redbud, are we ready?
No, sir.
Parks and Recreation, Gainesborough?
No, sir.
Social Services Board, Member-at-Large, I believe Mr. Riley and I are not quite ready, or are we?
We will be in March.
Russell 150, Community Development Authority, should we... I've got word on Mr. Hudson, are we ready to move forward on that?
He's willing to continue. Yes, sir.
Mr. Hudson has said that he would be willing to serve again if it's the pleasure of the board.
I'd so move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Ewing, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing now, all's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Mr. Hudson is reappointed. We'll be looking for a replacement for Mr. Scully, if any of you have some ideas. Mr. Riley and I have a few. Planning Commission, Opeckin?
Be back later with it.
All right. Shawnee, Planning Commission?
Not yet, Mr. Chairman.
Historic Resources Advisory, Opeckin?
I'll be back later, Mr. Chairman.
Sentation Authority, County Representation, Representative Redbud?
I have not spoken with Mr. Cunningham yet, but I will try to contact him.
All right, next is a request from the Commissioner of Revenue for refund, Mr. Riley?
Mr. Chairman, I am lost in my electronic mess here. Thank you. County Attorney notes that he is in receipt of the Commissioner's request dated February 14, 2013, to authorize the Treasurer to refund Winchester Speech Pathologist the amount of $5,152.20 for over-reporting and overpaying business license for one or more years. One or more subsequent years was adjusted with an increase, and all other records are now correct. Because the tax involved is based upon a taxpayer's gross receipts, I am not including the Commissioner's request memorandum with this memorandum, and I have omitted here further details as to exact tax amounts for particular years. I have, though, thoroughly reviewed the materials from the Commissioner, and pursuant to the provisions of Section 58.1 of the Code of Virginia is amended. I hereby note my consent and therefore request approval by the Board of Supervisors.
Questions, Mr. Riley? Mr. Riley, we're either changing the way we're doing things, or this is a different kind of refund. Explain.
I'm going to defer to the county attorney.
And, Mr. Chairman, I guess if I might answer a question with a question, different in what sense?
We generally had the letter from the Commissioner.
Okay.
Purposely pointed out that you omitted it, and I'm not interested in the content of the letter, I'm interested in the principle you're adhering to.
The principle here is that the letter specified the particular years it issue, and if we were to then provide that detail, it would... The public would then have the information as to the revenue adjustment for the business for each year, such that, for example, however many dollars that comes out to, if it's $500,000 or whatever, confidential taxpayer information on business revenue would be made public, which it's not supposed to be.
Do we do this upon the request of a refund recipient, or make it standard practice to not divulge company personal information, or...
It would be... No, it would be standard practice. And this really only comes up in the instance most likely of business license. The vast majority of the refunds that seem to come through our personal property tax refunds, there's no confidentiality requirement on the dollar amount of the personal property tax issues, or the assessed values. But on revenue, that's obviously a little more sensitive, somebody doesn't want to know... Doesn't want... Obviously doesn't want the public to know that they had X number of dollars of revenue for a particular year.
Okay. Anybody else have a question? What's your pleasure?
Move for approval of refund, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ewing to approve the refund, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton, any discussion? Hearing now, all's... Whoops. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the refund is approved. Next, we'll have the Finance Committee report. Supervisor Ewing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance Committee met on February 20, 2013. Items 1 and 2 were handled on Consent Agenda, and I move for approval as consent.
All right, we have a motion to approve Items 1 and 2 consent, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor De Haven, any discussion? Hearing now, Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
The NRADC Superintendent requests an NARDC fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $261,183 for the fall 2012 employee bonus and to realize... Revitalize Officer Career Advancement and Development Program this spring. The Jail Board approved the request, and the Committee recommends approval, and I so move.
A motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor De Haven, any discussion? Hearing now, Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
Greenwood Volunteer Foreign Rescue Company requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $23,797.38. This amount represents proffer funds available to Greenwood for the purchase of an ambulance. This item is listed in the county CIP. Committee recommends approval of the current balance of the proffers designated to Greenwood in the amount of $25,211.38. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
A motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, who was that? Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing now, Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
The voter registrar requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $33,385 for the June dual primary election. The Committee recommends appropriation contingent on the calling of the primary, and I so move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton, discussion. Hearing now, Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
No.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
Transportation Director requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $710,904. This amount represents revenue shared... Sharing with VDOT for work on Route 11 North. No local funds required. Committee recommends approval, and I so move.
A motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor De Haven, any discussion? Hearing now, Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
Public Works Director requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $452,347 for the design of the new Round Hill Foreign Rescue Station and Social Hall. Public Works Committee has approved this request. Local funds are required. The Committee recommends approval, and I so move.
A motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I had a very brief question. The... This money that we're spending is anticipated to come back to us at some point in time, correct?
That's correct.
Other questions or discussion? Hearing now, Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
County Administrator requests authorization to have an appraisal on the County Administration Building. Funds are available in current budget. Committee recommends approval, and I so move.
A motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton, discussion. Hearing now, Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
For information purpose only, Mr. Chairman, Finance Director discussed the 2012 Comprehensive Annual Report with the Committee, and there's no actions required on that, I just wanted to let you know. Also, the Committee... The Audit Committee met following the Finance Committee. David Foley from Robinson, Farmer &amp; Cox &amp; Associates discussed the audit of 2012, final audit, and also discussed the upcoming 2013 audit. The Committee authorized the Finance Audit Committee Chairman to sign the engagement letter for the 2013 audit with Robinson, Farmer &amp; Cox. Do we need a motion on that? I don't think so, do we?
I believe so.
That's... That's the end of my report, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Our next item is Planning Commission Business Discussion, Private Streets in the R5 Residential Recreational Community District. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is an ordinance amendment that you previously discussed back at your December meeting, and we've taken it through a couple of other committees at your request, and now we're back before you to continue the discussion on this. So I'm just going to go back through, really, kind of the history behind the private streets in the R5, as well as some project-specific information that we typically don't get into with ordinance amendments, but since this, as you're aware, pertains to a certain development, I'm going to go ahead and go over some of that information. So really, what this is, we received a request to allow the use of private streets for all types of developments in the R5, which is the Residential Recreational Community Zoning District. Currently, the use of private streets in the R5 is only permitted within age-restricted communities, and only approved by the Board Supervisors. Now, prior to the adoption of the age-restricted private street allowance, the use of public streets was mandatory for all new developments in the R5 after 1990. Now, prior to 1990, private roads were permitted in the R5 communities, but the allowance for private streets was removed from the R5 in 1990, following a number of issues that ultimately led to the court-ordered creation of the Shawnee Land Sanitary District in 1987. So, back at that time, it was decided that private roads should not be permitted in the future, due to the issues communities had maintaining them. But then, the age-restricted private street allowance was added back into the R5 in 2000, along with a number of other revisions that were requested by Dogwood Development Group, which was the prior owner of the Shenandoah Development, also previously called Wheatlands. So those changes were approved back then to allow increased flexibility and alternative designs in the R5, while recognizing that an age-restricted development would have reduced impacts on capital facilities. So now, the amendment that is before you tonight proposes to allow the use of private streets within all developments in the R5, but would still require Board Supervisors' approval. Now, it should be noted that this text amendment has the potential to modify communities previously approved, but not proffered as age-restricted, and it could introduce dwelling units that accommodate all ages. Now, in addition to the expansion... The expanded use of private streets, there's some other text amendments that are included. First, there's text stating that all road sections must meet the minimum thickness base for VDOT pavement design standards, and all accessory features, such as things like guardrails, need to be provided. There's text stating that the roads will not be accepted by the county or VDOT, and this text would need to be in all design plans, plaits, and sales material. There's a requirement that the developer establish a reserve fund, and a requirement that the developer have an engineer certify the construction of the private streets. So kind of the history of where this has been, it originally started back at the DRC in October of last year, then discussed by the Planning Commission in December, and then the Board at your December 12 meeting. At that meeting, you forwarded it to the Public Works Committee and the Transportation Committee. Now, the Public Works Committee met the end of January, and the Transportation Committee in February. So to go over the Public Works Committee discussion, the Committee expressed some concern about the significant impacts that the revised development would have on the county services. There's also concern expressed about the future maintenance of the private streets, and it was suggested that the ordinance amendment be revised to require a certain percentage of the development remain age-restricted to offset the potential impacts. Now, just to go over the actual impacts on the county facilities, based on the revised master plan that's being circulated by the applicant, that's being considered by the various agencies, the revised master plan would have a little over 2,000 housing units, approximately 230 of those are age-restricted, and those have already been platted. Now, the remaining 1,800 housing units would be non-age-restricted, and would consist of about 1,200 single-family detached and 590 single-family attached units. Now, given those, if you run them under the development impact model, you're talking upwards of a $30 million impact on county facilities. Now, moving on, the Transportation Committee discussed this at their February meeting. At that meeting, there were no comments received, and the Committee recommended that the proposed amendment be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors without a recommendation for further consideration. So just to summarize what the Shenandoah Development would actually need to do is first, in order to develop with the private streets that they're requesting, would be first to secure the requested ordinance amendment that we are discussing tonight, which is for the private streets in the development. Second, they would need to come before you for the waiver of the public street requirement, and then, if that waiver is approved, they would need to secure approval of a revised master development plan. So, tonight, this is a discussion for this ordinance amendment. We are seeking direction from the Board on these proposed amendments, as to whether they're ready to be sent forward to public hearings. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions to staff? Supervisor Lofton?
Ms. Perkins, as I understand it, the discussion of if, in fact, we do not allow for the private streets to be commuted to all R5 subdivisions, this particular... If they wanted to continue in this particular subdivision, they'd have to build public streets, is that correct?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct. They'd either need to continue the development as an entirely age-restricted development with private streets, or if they wanted to do not age-restricted, they would have to continue and do all public streets.
But with that, that's the only caveat that would be required of them is to make public streets as opposed to private streets. Doesn't impact any other impacts that might be had as far as schools, the other development impact model cost that could be borne?
Correct.
That's negated. That is not applied in this particular instance, right?
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, in meeting with the developer and attorney, I think a figure, correct me if I'm wrong, of an additional 600 lots would be dedicated to age-restricted. Just giving that out for information.
Right. Our numbers were just simply based on what we were.
Yeah. I just wanted to update that figure to, um, at least 600. Possibility of more, guaranteed six.
Mr. Chairman, another question, if I may. Does a revision of this, or this amendment, does it affect any other current subdivisions?
No.
But it would affect all future subdivisions or developments of this kind?
Correct. I mean, if, if a new project were to come in for R5 zoning, it would affect them.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The request is to forward for public hearing or not. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'm just going to cut to the chase on this. I think the impact of this on county services, and I would make a recommendation that's not go to public hearing.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton.
I understand the rationale behind that. I was kind of looking forward to hearing from the community on this particular subject. I think it might have some merit. I understand the impacts, but from my understanding, if this development can continue with public streets, those impacts are not negated at any stretch of the imagination. So, I don't know what there is to be gained by not, and, and from my understanding of where VDOT is, now maybe the new transportation bill will take care of all VDOT's maintenance problems, and there won't be any more talk of devolution, but I wouldn't want to be assured of that. So, I think that if we were thinking long-term about the possibility of getting the responsibility for maintaining state-accepted roadways, that private streets might be an advantage to us in the future. So, that's why I was interested in hearing what the community had to say in a public hearing. So, I would, I would vote against not sending it to public hearing.
Any other discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I was in a position of hoping that we could have the public address it also. Um, I, I probably will vote no on the motion, but.
Mr. Chairman, I just, Ms. Perkins, put that impact on the county slide back up there, the one with the.
Then I'll take it that we're ready to vote. The motion is to deny the request and not send it to public hearing. Supervisor Lofton?
No.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
No.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
No.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes. So, we will not be forwarding it to public hearing. Forty-eight on reports, are there any?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to report one thing. It's been in the papers and all, but some people are probably not aware that we're losing our library director in, in August. We'll be looking for a new one, and Ms. Ridgeway is going to be a hard one to replace, but they have a four or five months here to select one, someone, and they're going out nationally to look for someone, but I just thought I'd let you know in case you didn't know that she is, has resigned and will be leaving in August.
Any other liaison reports?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton.
Uh, this must be the season because I should report that Mrs. Karen Riddings of the Extension Leadership Council is also retiring after many years of dedicated service. I think she's done a wonderful job, and I know that we will be able to recognize that accomplishment at some point, but I would just like to wish her all the best in her retirement and thank her for all her many years of service she has put into the county and to the extension service.
Anyone else? I'll do a brief report on joint finance from this morning, unless you'd like to do it.
Go ahead.
Um, the agenda was courthouse renovations, RFP update. We expect to receive a copy of an RFP to do renovations on the courthouse that we will then consider appropriation of funding to accomplish, but it's in draft, hasn't received, Mr. Riley hasn't received it yet. I suspect we'll probably go to Public Works with it.
Yes, sir.
Um, General District Court and Juvenile Domestic Relations, court employees have submitted a, a request for subsidies, and I had no idea it was as complicated as it is, if you were to do something. So, the joint finance made no recommendation to you at this time to, to consider that, but, or to seek other information, but invited that group to revisit this issue, once we, in another cycle. There was a consensus that we're sort of being asked to fix a state problem for state employees, but it is confusing. So, the door wasn't slammed shut, but it was for this cycle because of needing to process the budget. If that helps you, Supervisor Collins?
It does. Thank you.
Library funding for fiscal year 14, we, the budget that the library ultimately, that the city ultimately funded their share of, we did not fund our share of that budget. We held it current, present level last year, and so the city and we entered into dialogue how to make sure that we could both get on the same page in future years. That's ongoing. Mr. Riley has already put in place some things that should alleviate most of that problem so that one jurisdiction doesn't do more than they thought the other one did. Usually, it happens with us because we go first. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Outside, agency funding discussions, we're going to continue to work on that one. It's no better issue for the city than it is to us. They do seem to talk about having some alternatives that we do not have under community block development grants, and so I don't, I don't, I think we were to give them notice of the ones that we'd like to talk to them about, either because we don't have concerns, or we, we don't think we're participating, and they're supposed to do the same thing, and we meet later and we talk about it. Is that, is that how you remember it?
Yes.
Okay. Then we had a draft funding MOU for the EDC, JJC, and CVB, and as we did away with the old comprehensive memorandum of understanding and reduced everything to individuals, these three are left over. So, um, JJC and CVB went forward. They would like to propose some modifications to the draft that we presented at EDC, and so we'll see that at a later date, but Mr. Riley's going to have these other two on an agenda for you at a future meeting. And there was a previous memorandum of understanding on the funding for the MO, for the museum fundings, and it, it's not what we do anymore. They do theirs and we do ours, and so we needed to basically terminate that memorandum of understanding, and so that also will be coming to you. And so, that was the, that was the gist of the, of the suggestions, and I hope we didn't rob a future agenda of explanations, but.
You did.
We are trying to meet more frequently and regularly and systematically, but not so much on our side, but candidly on the city's side, we've got and had a series of new players, and so we got to see how this works out and, and what can be meaningful. We went for a spell there where we all but didn't meet, but we're giving it another try. Anybody else have a liaison report? If not, then it's a citizen comment portion of meeting. Are there any citizens here who would like to address the Board on any topic? If so, would you please come forward, give your name, magisterial district, and let me to your comments in three minutes, please?
John Wright, Red Bell District. Good evening. I thank you for your time. As you continue to work on preparing your fiscal year 14 county budget, I'd encourage you to continue to focus on the top priorities previously mentioned by county administration: salary increases, an evaluation of employee salary scales and benefits, and ensuring a highly-trained public safety program. For the last five years, county employees have seen mostly stagnant salaries. Some benefits been reduced, some remain frozen, and others have been removed altogether. While I think all county employees understood the difficult economic times that we went through, we are now seeing positive economic news locally and multimillion-dollar budget surpluses at the state and local level. Now is the time for Frederick County to support its employees with a meaningful raise, and based on the presentation earlier tonight, that looks promising. Recently, there has also been an increased focus on getting county employee benefits in line with that of the public sector. While this seems like the appropriate thing to do, everyone must understand the difference between public and private sector employment. Private sector employees have higher salaries but lower benefits, whereas public sector employees have the opposite, lower salaries but higher benefits. This is what makes public sector employment attractive to prospective employees. As previously noted by Mr. Riley, recent changes in the county's benefit package means that the current nine-and-a-half percent gap in total employee compensation between public and county employees will increase as benefits decrease, thus reducing, or thus resulting in low attraction and retention of employees. We may already be seeing some of the effects of this. The quality and quantity of the applicants we are seeing is down from previous years. The Fire and Rescue Department's most recent hiring process resulted in only 26 applicants. Following written and practical examinations, background checks, et cetera, only two applicants now remain, and they still have to get through a physical. We need ALS providers, and only one applied in the same process. The department will soon to begin, will soon have to begin its second process in less than six months just to fill vacancies and establish an eligibility list. In addition, the Fire and Rescue Department has had a significant turnover rate. Looking back since 2008, when salary freezes and benefit reductions were enacted, the department has suffered a 19% turnover rate amongst its employee population. And when you consider only the field staff, the operational staff that work in the stations, that rate increases to 23%. And while I can't sit here and tell you tonight that every single employee that has left, left specifically because of budget reductions, I can say that they didn't help to retain those employees. I would encourage you at the very least to compare total employee compensation to not only localities of the same size in the surrounding area, but to also compare Frederick County to those localities who we have lost employees to. And though we will not, we will never compete salary-wise with Northern Virginia, we can compete with them, I finished, Mr. Chairman, we can compete with them with higher benefits. Thank you for your time.
Did we forget to tell you that we started seven o'clock instead of 7:15 now?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Sorry.
That's fine. I would be willing to do a prayer to Benedictus at your discernment, and I apologize for not having the information, but you stated the reason.
Sorry, our oversight. We were 7:15 for an awful long time, and somebody said, "Why?", and the only answer was, "We've always done it that way", so we said, "How about seven?", and we forgot to tell you. Anyone else? If not, Board of Supervisors comments? Well, if y'all give me the liberty, we'll have a benediction.
Would you stand?
My apologies. This is Reverend Pastor Rob Ross Haversma from the New Hope Alliance Church.
Thank you. God of the universe, you entrust to us and to these in this room the responsibility to govern. Thank you for their service. Would you pour into their life blessing and into this community? Would you cause us to live according to the great commandment to love others as we love ourselves? In the days that lie ahead, all levels of government will be faced with challenges that are unwelcome. May we know that you are the one to whom we derive all wisdom, and therefore may truth prevail. In the name of Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
Supervisor Ewing?
Mr. Chairman, move for adjournment.
We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those no, meaning adjourn.
Amy May is your first.
Stole your head. What, doesn't he just call him Amy?
He's just going. Go, go. Okay, thanks. Thanks for telling me. Good to see you.
Good night for the alcohol. The ball don't call a day, because you're done.
I was directed to be at a dinner for me. My wife said I would. It was, it was a, it was a surprise.
I know where you're going to be tomorrow. My office is open.